Fourth, sure.
It should be different items.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Our first individual is Jenna Schubert and the next one is Jeffrey Christian.
And if you could please state your address for the record.
Jenna Schubert, 29 Evelyn Street. First of all, I'd like to say that I don't represent the police. I've never threatened you guys, neither have most of the people here. And I hope that you guys don't let a few rude people give you permission to ignore our voices. With that said, please don't tell me that this mask issue isn't about ideologies and value systems. You're desiring to pass a mandate that no one will be enforcing. How is this anything other than political or symbolic then? We are not here today because you are compassionate and I am callous. Or because I am selfish and you are generous. We are not here today because I am too stupid to understand and you are so smart. This is rhetoric.
Ms. Schubert, are you speaking to some of the items on the agenda today?
The last item on the agenda, yes.
All right.
Thank you. We are not here about a public health issue or keeping Oshkosh open. If this were true, the mandate would be enforced and broad percentages of the population would not be exempt. This is not about public health or science. I came here with data, many people did. Our rate of active cases has plateaued and our city is under no imminent threat. The media has sensationalized this beyond comprehension. 1,062 new COVID cases today, the second highest rise in cases, but 600 people have recovered. This is narrative. There are too many smart people in this room for me to be the only one who sees these problems. At the foundation, we are here today because we hold different and equally valid value systems. I imagine at the top of yours is safety, health, collectivism. And at the top of mine is autonomy, personal sovereignty. And you don't have to understand and no one is asking you to. But as our representatives and as representatives of a city with a beautiful liberal arts university, you are called to represent even the most diverse voices in our community, even the unpopular ones, the minority groups, even the ones that don't hold your values. I am concerned about the lack of dialogue on this community platform over this issue. I don't care what every other city, county, state, or country in this world is doing to their citizens. What are we going to do? Are we going to silence a group of people against their will and their values for the intangible greater good, whatever that might be today? The lack of real critical thinking in our world today has deeply affected this narrative. You have a duty to your citizens to discuss the competing value systems at play. This is ethics. You might not agree with me, but I have not even heard an actual discussion on this topic. It is not acceptable to get up and read statements to your community that has just poured itself out to you, begging for you to hear their values. I'll leave you with a succinct thought by Ian Rand, since she said it better than I could. Individual rights are not subject to a public vote. A majority has no right to vote away the rights of a minority. The political function of rights is precisely to protect minorities from oppression by majorities. And the smallest minority on earth is the individual. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was under the impression that, I'm sorry, that masks were on the agenda today and we weren't allowed to speak on them next week because you were voting on them.
No, it's not.
Okay, so we are allowed to speak next week as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right, sorry.
And I would just direct future speakers to keep your comments to items that are specifically on the agenda today. Who's next?
Okay, Jeffrey Christian and then Marielle Owen.
Good morning and thank you again for allowing us to make statements. I'm concerned about your desire to have the meetings go to exclusively Zoom for a period of time. I don't know what that period is. But it concerns me because what we're doing now is a valuable and important part of government. I guess it was 1995, I owned a different, oh, I didn't tell you, I'm sorry. Jeffrey Christian, 1292 West 18th Avenue. I owned a different property at that time and there was an issue at the property. And it was the first time I'd come to the city council and I spoke and I told the council at that time the difficulties that we were having. And through a series of these type of interactions, those issues, those problems were solved by the council and by other means. And it was this opportunity to come and speak to the council and bring the issues forward that at the time many were not aware of, that allowed that to be solved. And if we go to exclusively Zoom meetings where the public input is much more limited, it will eliminate that ability to do that and have that important interaction. As I said the last time, we elected you because we trust you, we trust your judgment. But we also want you to hear us when we have something that's important to us and we won't be able to do that if we go to these exclusively Zoom meetings. I don't feel that at this time there's such a public health risk to having these meetings. So I would encourage you to continue with the public meetings as you've been doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Marielle Owen. Lydia Lyons.
My name is Marielle Owen. I live at 2357 Vinland Street here in Oshkosh. I'm also, as Mr. Christian, against going to completely virtual city council meetings. I for one am a millennial, but I still have my flip phone and I don't, I'm very hesitant to get away from that. And I don't think I'm the only person in the whole world that, or in the whole city that is a little less than, a little behind on technology. And I really, I mean, if we want to go to allowing it to be accessed by Zoom or another virtual means so that other people who maybe don't feel like coming or feel like they do need to social distance or for whatever reason, I think that's a very logical way to do things, but to make it virtually Zoom, it's, and I don't mean any disrespect, but it kind of raises suspicion because it's almost as if you don't want the public to be here, which may or may not be true. I tend to want to trust people and I don't like to have the suspicion, but when it seems like that by making this only virtual, it kind of seems like you're pushing the public away and not letting the public be heard in person. And so I also would appreciate it if, you know, if we want to do a virtual means so that other people can participate, I'm more than open to that. But I don't think it should be only virtual because you're also being pretty exclusive to the people who would like to attend and who would like to be here. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Lydia Lyons. Josh Schrath.
Hello, City of Oshkosh Council. My name is Lydia Lyons. I live at 935 Greenfield Trail. I'm here to pretty much try to touch base on almost everything that you have going on right now. For starters, thank you for letting me speak. I'm not quite sure why I am because my belief is that you guys have already made up your minds. The last meeting we had, we had a good hundred people show up. They were not allowed to sit in this room due to social distancing. However, we did let a doctor that was for the mask mandate come in, but everybody else had to go out there, so to me that seemed very biased. However, with the Zoom meetings, number one, they have tons of Zoom things going on right now and I have heard nothing but troubles trying to get into Zoom. People are having tons of issues and if we have as many people that showed up last time, over a hundred and some trying to all get in at the same time, people aren't going to be heard. People aren't going to be heard. These meetings are very important. You guys want a mask mandate for the safety of the public. If the masks are so safe, why can't we have in-person meetings? Why can't we? Now patriotism, patriotism is the love of this country, the love of this country. Oshkosh, Wisconsin is part of this country. We were here, a lot of us were here before 2007. We helped build this community back when we had Morgan doors, back when we had Buckstaff, back when this was a lumbering community. And now we're trying to be, you're being shut out by people who recently just moved here. We voted you guys in. We expect to be heard. We shouldn't have to try to Zoom if we have people that don't have Zoom. We have a large, large population of elderly people here who have no clue how to work a computer. It's not fair. The Oshkosh public citizens aren't going to be heard. It's just not going to be heard. You know, want to speak about why certain individuals have immigrated to our country is because of socialism, because of people being shut out and quieted. Now, if we start doing it here in the United States of America, where are they going to come for a safe haven? We know what socialism has done. We know what it's done in other countries.
Ma'am, could you keep your comments to the items on the agenda, please?
It is, this is, this has to do with being heard and being shut out. Socialism and immigration, that's why they came here, because they were being shut out. And if we're doing it here, where are people going to be able to speak next? This is about this. Okay, we've had, we had, why we want to do Zoom is because we're supposed to be under a pandemic, right? A state of emergency. But yet we've only had 900 and some people die from it in Wisconsin. A population of 5.8 million people, that doesn't seem like it's a state of emergency to me. We have data, we have, I may get my, I have my statistics because we're, believe it or not, we're not dumb people. We have 735 beds at Freiter. We have 505 beds at UW Medicine. We have 172 at Mercy Medical and 167 at Aurora, right here in Oshkosh. It was not packed. We're not under a state of emergency like social media wants us to believe.
The city is currently under a state of emergency.
What you guys are saying, some of us don't believe that. That's opinions when we only have 917 people that died out of 5.8 million. Doesn't say, what, if this is a state of emergency, what's going to happen when there really is a state of emergency? Should we burn down Wisconsin? You know, we're, these are, these are statistics. And we want to do a Zoom and shut off people and Zoom has issues, even when it's just one person trying to interview for a job. Now we're looking at over a hundred and some people that came the last time. It's going to be an issue and people aren't going to be able to be heard. We had this meeting today at seven o'clock in the morning, ironically, when everybody works. Seems ironic that it's at this time, who's going to be heard on this issue? Like I said, I'm fairly certain you guys' minds are made up and that is sad because we voted you in and there will be a revote. And I'm hoping that you give us enough attention, the same attention you gave BLM when you closed down the streets to march. I'm hoping you give us that same First Amendment right. And if the mandate passes, I also hope you give us the right to march and have our First Amendment rights. Be heard. This is what this is about, right?
So if you could wrap up your comments, they're going on five minutes.
It's about safety. And if it's about safety and you guys are mandating masks, then Zoom shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I just speak to an item? So Ms. Lyons, just so you know, and for others, for others to know as well. So obviously, this meeting came to my attention on Friday. And as you can imagine, Tuesday was an incredibly long meeting, which was, we were all happy to participate in. But then there was backlash through that entire week. And so there was a number of things that I had on my calendar in which needed to be rescheduled for this week. So with the urgent nature request of two council members, this timeframe was the only time I could meet before my workday started. I think all but one on council works and has weekly commitments. So the 7:00 AM, that, if there's any, that's not, that was not the mayor. That was just me trying to accommodate the mayor and Mr. Peschall's request. So I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, you have a job to do as well, but I'm fairly certain we could have found a time in a matter of length, if we went to wanted, to try to push the Zoom meeting ahead before the mask mandate meeting comes up.
Well, I agree, it was, it was very clear.
And it seems very suspicious to me that that's, that this is why we're doing Zoom, so that everybody don't have a chance to speak.
And thank you for your viewpoint.
Yep.
Josh Schrath. Jolene St. Marie.
Are we allowed to speak on the podium or are we able to stand up?
Up here.
This is a case of public one that's for staff.
Up here.
I just wish we had a podium to be able to set our documents on and read from there instead of having to hold it up. But yeah, my name is Joshua Schrath. I live at 1119 Buchanan Avenue. I'm speaking on the whole Zoom meeting proposal thing. I just think it's not right. A lot of, a lot of our citizens here are elderly. They don't even know how to work a cellphone. I mean, how are they going to be able to connect when they don't even have a computer? And I'm just curious, last time we said the pledge, this time we didn't say the pledge. Why was that? It's a question of the council.
If you could deliver your comments.
I just did.
I think it was just simply missed on the agenda, sir.
That should never be missed on the agenda. That should be the first thing.
So if I could ask a question of the clerk. This is a special meeting and is that the reason why we don't include the pledge?
History has shown that with special meetings, we have not said the pledge.
So when stuff is special, the pledge isn't said, but all other meetings that aren't special.
So would you like to comment on the agenda items?
I agree with everybody that spoke so far. And I do think that this is a thing that just slept under the rug as what it's really looking to be. But I just, I'm just highly disappointed in who we voted for. And you guys will, I mean, we will vote again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jolene St. Marie. And then I have Eugene Zaster-Roth.
Hi, Jolene St. Marie, 2216 Hamilton Street. I'm here to support my fellow residents that live in Oshkosh, Wisconsin. I agree with everything everyone here has said. I thank you for giving us time to speak today. I also just want to stress that many people I know in my age group, I'm just turned 57, we aren't real good at the virtual web. I mean, some of us are maybe, but I know I'm not and a lot of my people that are in my age range aren't. And above that, so what about our elderly citizens that don't have access to that? I think that's very important for you to understand and realize that these people have a voice and we need to be there to help them to, so that they can verbalize their feelings as well. I mean, you've got a, you've got a large elderly community out here who has supported this community for all their life. And you're going to hone in to say that, I mean, I don't, I don't know what your agenda is here. I don't know if that's really what's going to happen, that it's just going to go virtual meetings. But I do want to say something else that's bugging me about the mask thing from last week. Because I was here, I didn't speak, I saw how many people came. And many people got disgusted because we were told as soon as we got here that only nine people could enter this room. And that back room was not allowed for anyone to go back into that room.
Yes.
And then the fire chief came out and the police chief came out and said, hey, 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 this is a code violation, you guys got to get out of the hallway. What the heck is that? And then we got directed, the people, people left because they were so disgusted. And I know for a fact, Mayor Paul Mary, I know for a fact that people contacted you in emails and you never brought it up that they were against the mask thing. You never brought that up. You said 250 people responded to you. All of them said they were for it. That is a lie. It is a lie because I have several people who are willing to come forth, maybe not today, but to tell the truth. And that is a lie. And it was made, and it was made, I just gave you my comments. And we voted you in and this is not, this is not right. This is not right.
Thank you.
We are, we are trusting you. And many people spoke up and said, hey, we're going to give you the benefit of the doubt, council members that we voted in, we're going to give you all the benefit of the doubt. We're going to, we're going to try and believe you, but I know for a fact.
Ma'am, do you have comments that relate to the agenda items?
I did, I just told you. I think this is relevant. I think that everyone here should hear that. So I think everyone's voice needs to be heard.
Thank you.
Not just a few. And many people today obviously couldn't come, like was pointed out, because it's seven o'clock in the morning, people are working. Thank you.
Eugene Zasteria. Katie Campbell.
My name is Eugene Zaster. I live at 1882 Claraville Road. Thank you to the council members for being here. Obviously, you care about the area and want to serve and I appreciate that. Obviously, the primary comments are on Zoom meetings. I'm a public school teacher, adult education for 20 years. Online stuff is challenging even for my young adults that are savvy on that. So I kind of give that a thumbs down. I would much prefer this kind of meeting, especially if masks are safe. I apologize, I didn't get to speak at the last meeting. I do want to address some mask thoughts. Masks are on the agenda, correct? Okay. The, the masks are supposed to protect us. Let me back up a little bit. I am a public school teacher and I've seen human nature over the last 20 years in young adults and adults in general. And the whole statistics of this pandemic are questionable. There's a reason I don't let my students grade their own exams. Okay, don't have to think too hard to figure that out. I just read, USA Today says hospitals get 20% premium if they mark a case as COVID. Is that kind of like allowing my students to grade their own tests? I'm sure there's plenty of honest ones out there, but for the most part, what are the odds that that data is skewed? I've also taken statistics. I know that, by the way, I can't breathe in this, I hate masks. So, so you can hear me and I can breathe. Statistics are wonderful because if you don't like the results you get the first time, you just re-crunch the data until it looks like you want it to look. I've researched, are masks effective? One article says, yes, there's a hairdresser in Texas that had COVID. They wore a mask, their customers wore a mask, none of their customers got COVID. That's wonderful. I'm glad my dentist wears a mask when they're two feet from my mouth. Okay, if you're within an arm's reach for that long, yeah, wear a mask. I'm being forced to teach with a mask. I can't see my students' expressions, they can't see mine. They are paying for an in-person teacher. They're not getting their money's worth because of the mask. Okay, change the subject. I have a 16-year-old daughter that's going to start driving soon, so I'm curious about highway safety. Statistics, okay, here we go. We like science, proven hard facts. 130,000 accidents in the state of Wisconsin last year on the highways. I'm scared for her life. Okay, 600 deaths on the highway in Wisconsin. Should I really be scared for her life? That's it, there's people dying out there, you cannot drive. So my proposal is, by the way, there was no highways closed. We didn't close down the highways, but I do have a proposal. We'll keep the highways open, but let's reduce the speed limit to 30 miles an hour. I think that would be much safer. That would maybe even eliminate the fatalities, but I'm not sure. People still die at 30 miles an hour. So let's go one step further. Let's give everybody a bicycle.
Mr. Zaster, is there a specific item on the agenda?
Yes, masks. Masks. You can't mandate safety. You cannot mandate safety. You can make things safer, but people have freedom. How many of you guys have driven over 70 miles an hour on Highway 41? Raise your hand. I have. Guess what? There's laws and there's freedoms. Okay, yes, you could make car travel 100% safe by not driving. Masks are not 100% safe. They're not the answer. I'm sorry, you cannot regulate us into 100% safety. Thank you.
Katie Campbell. Terry Rusing.
Good morning. My name is Katie Campbell and I live at 614 Wagu Avenue. I was under the understanding that masks were also on the agenda, but in terms of Zoom meetings, I do feel that it is a direct limitation to the public. And at the county board meetings that we have attended, they were very, it was very hard to hear the individuals speak. And I really, I think I do understand that there's only about 100 people that can log in at a time. And since people that are here today, I know for sure the people that I am representing today, there are more than 100 of us that I think would be interested in attending future Zoom meetings. I hope you listen to my following speech with an open mind. I've been discussing with many people the issues of masks over the following past few days. Many of the people I have talked to and that I'm representing today are coming before you not as a mob, not as Republican or Democrat, not as the people filled with hatred towards others, but as a people who live simply, responsibly, devoting much time to this wonderful city. These people include private business owners, landlords, renters, veterans, teachers, and God-fearing people, but many of them are simply young mothers. I plead with you. If there's anyone you listen to, let it be the young mothers of this city. For mothers are always continuously looking to and thinking about the future, always questioning if certain decisions will yield prosperous outcomes that benefit the future of our children. We're always thinking of consequences. The young mothers speaking today are doing so in boldness. We have everything to lose. Our children's lives mean everything to us. And a community that is nurturing them and cultivating them is vital. We firmly believe and understand that the ultimate love for our community is found in the love for our children. The people I represent help neighbors snowball their sidewalks and driveways in the winter. They give to charities, they volunteer, they help their children with lemonade stands and encourage them to donate some profits to the local humane society or to a local charity. We fix up our houses and we buy houses in communities that need fixing up. We try to be a light in our block. We give our time, we give our money, and we do it all without government mandates. We do this, all of this, for our children, so they see responsible freedom at work, so that they see the importance of loving our neighbor and loving our community has immense merit when it's done on our own, of our own accord, of our own choice. Our children do not learn what responsible freedom is if it is mandated. The virtue of loving our neighbor becomes perverted if the government controls it. It becomes a forced action rather than an act of love. In reality, when in public, acts of charities and acts of love go much deeper than what we wear in our faces. In reality, in the store, when I smile without my mask at a stranger, they often smile back at me. My maskless kids put a smile on both masked and maskless people. Love and kindness trump fear any day, even under this mandate. So what is the overall purpose of the collective or common good? Is that purpose morally good? Is our body property of the government? Is our body property of the government? What will the future hold for our children after crossing that bridge? What are we teaching them now? That the government controls our choices? That the government controls our bodies and our health? These are questions you should be asking yourselves, and you should be considering the implications of these mandates for our children as well. It seems like we are on a path where the government knows best. It knows the best for our health, our theology and philosophy, our understanding, and apparently our children. Yet we don't show acts of love for the government. We show love because we have been raised by traditional American patriots and God-fearing parents. We have been taught to respect others. And if this speech doesn't give you a different perspective or a change of heart, I want you all to know that I would be here at any time to let the council know that despite what mandates and decisions you put forth, I am on a pursuit to revive Oshkosh one mother at a time. Thank you.
All right. No applause in the chambers.
Terry Rushing, Rebecca Longsign.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just for the record, the name was Rushing, just like in a hurry.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. But I'm not in a hurry this morning. I know all of us are taking our time. Terry Rushing, 249 West 17th Avenue here in Oshkosh, and it's a, it's a pleasure to be here with you. And what I'm going to read is actually the email that each of you received already, but I'd like to read it for the public record, and then just so you can hear from me in person. And I don't speak well in public. Some may say otherwise, but I get nervous with confrontation. Emails are easy to write, and they're easy to send, but there's no substitute for the in-person. So first of all, thank you each for serving, and Mayor, and council members. I don't take it lightly whether I agree with the position or not. I don't take your service lightly, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you very much. Also sent this to Mr. Rohoff. I enjoy hearing you describing the state of our city on the radio and, and appreciate your, your work as well in the background. So dear City Council, Oshkosh City Council members, thank you for taking the time to read the communication that is coming to you in volumes, no doubt, in many forms and from all sides of this COVID mask mandate issue. I wrote each of you following last Tuesday's long meeting, and sincerely, they appreciate the opportunity to remain in that meeting until the end. You have important business to process, and I suspect that the lumbering on of public comments seems to derail your progress. I sympathize with your challenge, and I mean that. You're real people with real lives and real schedules, just like you have on this morning. But the agenda for this meeting this morning certainly seems to be, and I, parentheses, and I appreciate Ms. Allison Asby explaining the timeliness of the meeting and having to call it as early as we are. I understand that, but it seems to be the agenda a clear attempt to work around or even prevent the interruption of public comments, particularly with the virtual meetings. But I appeal to you that the exercise of our ability to speak to you as the governing body is the key to the success of our government and livelihood. It is only fair for you to hear what your constituents are actually thinking. I can write emails all day long, but emails are not personal and do not convey the emotions that are critical to your understanding of the populace. I address all four points in the agenda, beginning with the last, and I know they're laid out in the, in the agenda, but the fourth one, the report from the city attorney on the status of the mask ordinance due to Governor Evers' recent emergency order, and I'm requesting that this item be presented first in order to give both the council and the public a clear understanding of the legal counsel's assessment in light of the governor's emergency order. The city attorney's report could potentially impact and direct the discussion of the other three proposed amendments. Then the First Amendment to allow all or to make all virtual for public and officials, all virtual meetings. Just very simply, I oppose the adoption of all virtual meetings for the reasons stated above. Point number two, to allow virtual participation by the public. I do not oppose virtual participation for those who truly cannot attend in person, but I still maintain that the weight of comments is and should be much greater for in-person attendees who take the time and the effort to stand before you. And then number three, to require masks at all council meetings unless otherwise exempted by law. I oppose city council creating a requirement to wear a mask at all council meetings. Rather, masks should only be required at council meetings if required by law for the entire populace, to which I have already stated my opposition in my previous communication with each council member individually. And I do appreciate the opportunity to do that, to communicate with you.
If you could finish up your comments, sir.
Yes, I'm just about finished. As I stated in that previous communication, wearing a mask should be the choice of the individual, and if the mask is believed to be effective, then the wearer may freely exercise his wish to protect himself with that mask. I look forward to hearing your discussion on these points, and I do sincerely, as I mentioned in my communication, I do pray for each one of you.
Thank you.
As we did this morning, and I pray that God will give you wisdom and the fortitude to lead and to act with righteous judgments. That's what government is for.
Thank you. Your, your time is up.
Thank you very much, Ms. Paul Mary. The Bible speaks.
That's the end.
About righteous.
Next.
Judgments.
This is what's going to happen in Zoom. Are you guys going to just cut us off?
There were five-minute limitations.
Well, still, I mean, he was just.
You're out of order.
Of course I'm out of order, but this is exactly what's going to happen in Zoom. Exactly what's going to happen in Zoom. You're going to cut all of us off.
You're out of order, ma'am.
I understand I'm out of order, but what I'm saying is this is what's going to happen during Zoom.
You need to leave the chambers now.
That's, that's absolutely fine. I'll leave the chambers, but that's a question I have everybody here. This is what's going to happen if we have Zoom. Exactly what's going to happen at Zoom. Thank you very much. I appreciate that everybody gave you the freedom to speak.
Next.
Rebecca Longsign, Matt Mickelson.
Good morning. I appreciate you hearing me. My name is Rebecca Longsign. I reside at 132 West 25th Ave. I usually leave this kind of stuff to my husband because, as Jerry Seinfeld would say, the number one fear in America is that of public speaking. So you would rather be the person in the casket than the one giving the eulogy, and that is me. I, I would like to avoid this at all costs whenever possible, but I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. One comment, just before I read my statement. I was speaking with my elderly neighbor, who is 70, and she watches the council meetings, and she enjoys the ability to watch them, but upon hearing the possibility of going completely virtual, she was not real thrilled because she does not own a smartphone. She does not own a computer, and she likes the possibility of being able to hear her voice heard. Most of my life, in growing up, in going to school, in attending college, I've been told that in-person is always more effective than phone calls and emails. That option is going to be greatly diminished with the move to only virtual meetings. Going virtual at this time definitely is not a good look. It makes it look like the Oshkosh Common Council wants to hide behind a virtual wall. They do not want to hear from the people they represent. I know I was at the meeting. I did not speak on Tuesday. I know it was long. I know it was emotionally charged, and I understand the pressure that it puts on all of you, and I thank you for taking the time to listen. The fact that there were people here to speak, there were cheers from down in the breakroom where I was sitting, being, there was limited seating here. There were people that grumbled. There were people that made their statements very succinctly, very respectfully, but an overwhelming number opposed something that was presented. If you take away the option for in-person, it will mute the voices of your constituents. In addition, I understand having the meeting at 7:00 in the morning to accommodate schedules. I do, but it's also a bad look for our community. Many people are skeptical of your honesty and integrity as council members over some of the things that have been presented as of late. Moving solely to a virtual meeting would make these people feel like they have a valid opinion of you. I personally have done my best not to judge your motives in how you choose to do things, but in general, in our society today, I am a minority. Most people are very skeptical of others who have an opposing view, and if you go solely to virtual, you will have vindicated their opinions. Government operates best when there is the opportunity for gridlock, and I would appreciate it if you would really consider, it may make your job easier to go to virtual, but it will become an issue for your constituents in being able to access things. Virtual methods are clunky, inhuman, and it makes it look like you are hiding things or avoiding conflict. I understand why you would want to, and I understand adding the option of virtual participation because there are those who cannot physically attend a meeting, and I am all for that, but I am not for going solely virtual. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt Mickelson, Evelyn Christensen.
Good morning.
Good morning. Matt Mickelson, 9061 Nabago. Good. 9061 Nabago. Appearances. Appearances are that we're looking like we're shutting down the public. I do understand that this is a public health concern, but at the same time, aren't, isn't the freedom of speech more important? We've all spoken about this. It sounds like a lot of them have. Where does this lead this? Where does this lead this city? Where does it end up going? Where does it, what does it make us look like? Isn't the appearance of government and how it's supposed to be more important than a little bit of public safety, the appearance of public safety? All over the city, there are people walking around like me without masks in public, within six feet, outside of six feet, enclosed, outside, everywhere. I'm sorry, there are germs in this room coming from each of you through your masks? I'm okay with that. I spoke of my immune system last time. I trust my immune system. What happens if this ends up going virtually? Is that a civil rights violation? Is there a discussion of a lawsuit being filed, not only here at the city level, but also at the county level, which, from what I understand, is going virtual tonight? When a population feels like it can't be heard, it enrages a segment of that population and will start making us think about not only voting you out, but starting to file lawsuits and injunctions against the city. Last, yeah, last week, I spoke of, you know, is there going to be a budget for the enforcement of all this? Is there a budget to deal with lawsuits? Now, you guys have Attorney Lawrence, and so in-house, you're already paying her. But what happens if a judgment is awarded against the city? I'm in judgment collections. I would be very tenacious to try and get that collected, and it would be unfortunate if it went that route. I don't think that there's a evil purpose behind each of you. I think that you're trying to make the best decision that you can. Mike, I always appreciate the statistics that you try to look at. But at the same time, sometimes we need to brush aside statistics and rather go with virtue of what's best, and is a person's ability to come out and, and speak in person, does that trump out public safety and germs? Lori, last week, I, as for going virtual, I applauded for the police, and you called me out of order. And you're here out of order. You're, you're calling people here out of order. I take personal offense to that, and we will continue to be out of order, to the point that I'm seriously considering on running against you at the next election. Guys, I hope you guys think about what the original intent of this country was supposed to be, and seriously put it to you to find out how we can make each other the strongest that we can and how everybody can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evelyn Christensen.
Applause now would be appreciated.
No.
Yes, thank you.
Goodbye.
That would be for your speech.
And then Michael Schra.
Evelyn Christensen, 1256 Willow Ben Lane. The reason I'm here today is because I am a victim of the mask. Years ago, when I was young, I had asthma, and I worked. I have not had any problem for years. I am now 70, and since I had to wear a mask, I developed the asthma back, or who knows what it has done to my lungs. Just coming today, I had an asthma attack in the hallway, walking up the stairs. I had to stand outside after I took my puffs and get my breath back before I could come and sit down. My daughter suffers headaches from wearing masks because she has to wear them at work all day. Also, there's been people that were told they had Legionnaires or COVID, and it turns out they had Legionnaires' disease, and they were treated for that, and they recovered. So... Another thing is the immune system. The mask make, takes your immune system away, just like all these hand sanitizers. Everybody's washing their hands with the sanitizers. You're not only killing the bad bacteria, you're killing the good bacteria. So now we got everybody walking around with a suppressed immune system, and then they wonder why people are getting sick. You should be telling us how to build, build our immune system and fight it that way instead of suppressing it. Also, there was an article in the paper that Wisconsin has not been recording all the number of negative test results, which screws the number, and that makes a big difference. I talked to people at Walmart, and they said since they have to wear masks, when they get done with their eight-hour shift, they are just exhausted from having to work with a mask on. And as far as I know, there's only been two people at Walmart that has came down with COVID. Can you imagine that? And they didn't wear masks until just recently. So they're walking around with the people, touching everything, and they're building up their immunity, and that's why they are not getting sick. Also, I watch a lot of Fox News, not our Channel 11 Fox News, and we see Dr. Fauci on quite a bit. And there's been an article going around on, back in 2005, on August 22nd, he reported that there is a cure for COVID. It's the chloroquine. And he said... And he said, we do not need to wear masks, we just need to be treated with the chloroquine, which the president talked about, which is why everybody's down on it. Dr. Siegel on Fox News, his father had COVID, and he prescribed the hydroxychloroquine, and it saved his life. A Democrat person from Michigan...
Ma'am, could I ask you to keep your comments related to the agenda items and to finish up, please? Thank you.
So anyways, that is on the agenda, masks. We do not need masks because there is a cure. That's what I'm getting around to. And the lady in Detroit listened to President Trump, and she took the hydroxychloroquine, and it saved her life. So if the media would knock it down, and a lot of the tests on it was done on patients who were too sick, and the ones that were given the drugs too early were over-medicated, and that's why it didn't work, but it does work. It's going all around on the internet. It's on Fox News. So I don't understand why we have to wear masks when there is a cure. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further citizens to speak. We do have...
Yes. Mr. Schra here? Michael Schra? All right. We do have a number of emails that came to City Manager that go into the record, and I will not be reading these verbatim. I will try to summarize how they relate to the items on the agenda. The first one is from Patricia Dwyer-Halkquist, 2030 Hazel Street, Oshkosh. Supports holding virtual council meetings during the pandemic as a way of allowing citizen Also supports writing its own, the city of Oshkosh writing its own mask ordinance. Enes Ralp, 2480 Security Drive, requesting to be able to participate remotely because we do not yet allow that. They also ask the council to move forward on a mask ordinance, whether or not the governor's order is in effect. Risa Hill, 100 West Fernal Avenue, looks like a business address, but she says she works and lives in Oshkosh. Strangely believes in the ability to participate remotely at future meetings. Has some health concerns, but would love to be able to participate virtually. R. Strubus, 1422 Wisconsin, wants to be on record in favor of remote participation from Would also like to go on record seeing the city pursue a local mask mandate. Robert Knudsen, writing in support of citizen remote participation in meetings in these COVID-19 times and beyond. Lindsay DeVries, in favor of moving forward with the mask ordinance if the statewide is overturned, and to be inclusive, the council should allow citizens to participate remotely at meetings. Dan Shea. Let's see here. Essentially is not in favor of the virtual meetings. Rebecca Longsign, I think we heard from you, Ms. Longsign, earlier, registered her comments. Catherine Brewer, 2311 Shore Preserve Drive, opposes the amendment requested to allow for only virtual and believes it could be disruptive. But then she does say that she wants equal access regardless of technology. Marielle Owen, we heard from earlier today, registered her comments similarly. And Jared Longsign, I believe we also heard from. A lengthy email. Let me see if I can distill this. Essentially, not in favor of virtual. Is in favor of a larger venue. Sean Shilder, 544 Raymore Road. I'm sorry. This is confusing because the email is from a Sean Shilder, but it's signed Gretchen. So maybe they share an email address.
I was going to white.
Basically, it was referencing the 100 citizens attending the last meeting. Several emails from folks when we referenced that, but wish they could attend. If you cannot accommodate all your citizens that would like to attend, then it should not be, or that this should be allowed. She doesn't believe that we're encouraging participation from all our citizens. I don't think there's really anything that specifically addresses the agenda in there today. Chad Owen, voiced his opposition to all virtual, and doesn't feel that we want to hear from Feels like this is an attempt to silence the voice of the people. Terry Rushing, we heard from today, similar comments. Jenny Smith thinks that this is sneaky. Would advise us to consider long-term ramifications of a decision in building trust and confidence who need transparency. I believe we are holding this in a public meeting right now. Opposed to virtual. Stephanie Zek, 2480 Parkside Drive, opposes council meetings going virtual for public and officials. Suspicious and cowardly. Let's see. Doesn't believe there's a state of emergency. Tori Mitchell, does not support an amendment to allow virtual only. Public should be able to attend. Deborah Mitchell, please vote no on a mask mandate. Does not support an amendment for virtual meetings. Citizens should be able to attend. And the last one, Jackie Steiner. Did we have Jackie speak earlier? No? Thinks that a special meeting is absurd. Someone sends an email or text, you can't see or hear their emotion. Doesn't think that we have the ability to read all of the emails. All right, that's all we have that are registered. We appreciate everyone coming to speak today, and those who registered their email comments. We'll bring this back to Council for a motion in a second. Number one, the amend council rules pertaining to council board and commission meetings in response to COVID-19 coronavirus. Consider amendment to make common council meetings all virtual for public and officials with an A, with the rule applied to boards and commissions, and a B, with the rule applied through emergency or for specific meetings. Do we have a motion to get it on the floor?
Can I ask a clarification first?
Yes.
We're under council discussion and direction, the City Manager. We don't need a motion to put this on the floor. It's already on the floor.
Correct.
Correct, madam?
You are correct.
See, clerk? Thank you.
So we have heard from folks leading up to the meeting as well, ready, went care to start the discussion.
I think it'd be appropriate, you're the one that requested the meeting and put this on the agenda, I think it'd be most appropriate to hear from those inquiring and those asking to have this.
Certainly giving the consideration to my fellow council members. So as we brought this meeting forward, Councilmember Paschal and I spoke with the City Manager. And first of all, I appreciate the comments earlier, gentlemen, that suggested that perhaps we might want to reorder the discussion to have the report from the city attorney on the status of considering mask ordinance due to the governor's recent emergency order. There were several emails that asked that as well, and it seems that we could have that as a first item and reorder these. Council's okay with that?
Yeah, definitely.
Absolutely, okay. City Attorney?
I do not have a report per se because I wasn't asked specifically for what we're looking for, but I did provide the council an email late yesterday. And in regard to the status of considering the mask ordinance, it's up to the council's direction. We are working on a draft, but just a couple of things to consider. The governor's order does explicitly supersede local ordinances, except if those ordinances are more restrictive. Based on the direction that was given at the last council meeting, it looks like there are probably two areas we were more restrictive in relation to, or potentially more restrictive in relation to outdoor areas. The governor's order is very limited as to outdoor areas within the mandate. Masks are encouraged, but not required under that order, except for outdoor restaurants, taverns, and park shelters. And council had talked about lines to enter indoor areas, and then a potential amendment dealing with larger outdoor special events. So that was a basic difference and would have been the one, the one or two areas, however you want to count it, where we were more restrictive, so would not necessarily have been superseded. In speaking with staff, we had some concern that having two orders in place potentially created confusion and ambiguity for the public and businesses to which this would potentially apply, and would then also create difficulties with enforcement for referrals to public health and for the police department. So it was mentioned that the theory behind continuing to move forward would be to have an ordinance in place in case the governor's order would be struck down by court or potentially overturned by the legislature. If other of these would happen, there's a chance that the ordinance, as it's currently proposed and drafted, because there are a lot of very similar provisions, would also be affected by that action. So that's something to consider. If the legislature takes up the matter, they could also take up the issue of local control over the matter. So that's just something to be aware of, and that could change how we would look at an ordinance if a court takes up the matter. They could also address issues that might affect both the governor's order and the local ordinance. So having us draft at this point in anticipation of what may be coming, you know, we can't guarantee whatever we draft now wouldn't change at a future time. I guess the basic question is whether you want to move forward and have us continue drafting at this point and have it in place as a backstop if you want us to focus on the one or two areas that's more restrictive, or if we should just hold at the moment.
Madam Mayor, if I might...
Yes, City Manager?
My recommendation would be to follow through with council's direction to prepare an ordinance, but keep the ordinance basically on the back burner. Monitor what's going on with the state, and ask council to lay over scheduling this item for discussion, and either bring it back, the last meeting in December, the expiration date of the governor's order...
You mean September?
I'm sorry. Thank you. September. I can't blame the mask, okay? The last meeting in September, or earlier if the governor's order is somehow reversed. Now, that could be through any method. The governor changes the order, the legislature does something, the courts do something. We'll keep monitoring it, as we've been doing regularly, and I know the council does as well. Then we can bring it back to you at that time. But as the city attorney said, depending on if there's a challenge and what part of that might be reversed, without knowing that, you could be adopting something that is mooted. So our recommendation was let us keep working on it, because we can make adjustments based on whatever may or may not happen, and bring it back to you certainly no later than the second meeting in September. And I'll put this on status of outstanding issues so we can always have an update, get the latest information. That would be my recommendation to council at this time.
And I think, you know, that makes sense, given that the statewide order came out, you know, after our recent discussions. It makes sense for us to remove that from the August 12th agenda and put it on the outstanding issues and continue to monitor. And that's my position on that item. Councilmember four?
Yeah, no, I agree 100%. We're a creature of the state. I think our goal, or I can say my goal in this discussion, was to minimize disruption caused by a community spread from COVID, and the state took action. Even though I might get hit by a bus this afternoon, I'd prefer my family not have the funeral scheduled yet. That doesn't need to be done. So I think that's the prudent course. Thank you, Mark.
Other council members?
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Councilmember Paschal?
I agree.
All right, I think you have your discussion, or your direction on that item. Is there any clarifying pieces that you need to that from council?
Given the fact that you said yes and I made a statement, it's my clear direction.
All right, okay.
I'm okay with that, thank you.
So that would bring us back to the discussion on whether or not we allow or amend the council rules that are in place during this state of the city emergency regarding our meetings and whether we would allow that meeting or make that meeting all virtual for council members and allow public comment virtually. And keep in mind too, that there was a March Department of Justice advisory on this that came out and there are pros and cons, but it is, as I understand it, permissible, correct? City Attorney?
Correct, that was addressed as well. Generally, what the law requires is that meetings be held in places reasonably accessible to members of the public. The DOJ advised that governmental bodies typically can meet by conducting meetings via telephone conference call, video, and video conference calls if the public is provided an effective way to monitor such calls. As the council knows, we provide a number of methods for that. If you are going to allow interaction with the public, you also need to make sure that whatever method you provide for that interaction, public comment is also reasonably accessible and ineffective. So that.
And I believe we, you know, we did specify that it's good practice and I believe that that Department of Justice advisory also recommended, along with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, that if you do have a virtual option, that you add phone-in capability. So I appreciate a number of comments that were made here today that referenced, you know, not everybody is, is utilizing internet and, and video capabilities, but certainly a number of the other public meetings that are going on in other cities and others around the state also have a simple phone-in capability as well. So while this references virtual, it also would in, I would think that it would include telephone. So where we're at is giving direction on whether this council would like to continue to meet as we are. And, or adding the virtual capability, actually that's number two. So this would be all virtual, including telephone in, and whether or not that, that rule would apply to our boards and commissions and, and for what length. I think that, councilmember Paschal, did you want to weigh in on number one?
Sure. I, I think my, my response is an obvious response to this. I've been meeting virtually since, since March and I'm very pleased that I'm allowed that ability to do that. I, I believe that, that we should be doing, meeting virtually through the emergency period, whatever that may be, or if deemed earlier and safer to do that. So there have been some hiccups in regards to the technology and everything that exists. Sorry. I meant to put my face up. Sorry about that. So there have been some, some technological glitches that have taken place over time, but I genuinely feel that staff is working on that and want to acknowledge that technology is a, is a constant work through on that. And if we were to move forward, it would again be a challenge that I think staff is up to making, making it so that it works correctly and, and viably for everyone. So I would be in support of amending the rules to go all virtual.
And part of the reason why we thought that this was deemed to be a special meeting that needed to occur sooner rather than later was in anticipation of the potential of not just the August 12th meeting, but some of the practices at the last meeting where we did have a large number of people attend and we're very grateful that people wanted to weigh in. But it presents somewhat of a dilemma if, if we're saying that we need to not hold events, large special events in the community because of the spread of the virus and, and a desire to reduce that transmission. But then if we have large gatherings indoors and those who do not feel they need to wear the mask for others and, and let it be clear that, that I believe that the wearing of mask is for protecting others and that since we were anticipating a larger turnout and to accommodate a larger turnout, going to a larger venue with an expectation, in addition to the limitations here. And, you know, we've continued to be able to manage to meet in person. Many other communities are meeting virtually or some hybrid. So that's one of the reasons that we brought this forward is in light of this. So part of that goes away with the state order and part of it doesn't. So if other council members would like to weigh in on their opinions on going all virtual, along with telephone in, just to be clear. Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you. I, I would be more supportive of having a virtual option. I think thanks to the people who talked today, I think there's, we should have some options for people to allow for greater flexibility and depending on what types of technology people have access to or don't have access to and being not able to physically attend, I think it's, I would be more supportive of having, so number two, having a virtual option for people.
And just to read that off, amending the council rules, number two is amending the council rules pertaining to council board and commission meetings in response to COVID-19 coronavirus emergency, consider amendment to allow virtual participation by public at council meetings. So that would be in addition. Just to be clear. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the rationale from councilmember Paschal and Mayor Paul Mary. I'm against moving our meetings to, to virtual. I agree with what some of the folks said today that I think it's, it's a bad look coming off a large crowd, large crowd that we had last week. I also think it's clunky in implementation, but more importantly, just looking around today, we got about 75 to 80% compliance with our rules of this body from the crowd. I'm hopeful that we can, we can up that. I am hopeful people can be respectful of the rules of, of our body. I hope people can be respectful of the implementation of those rules by our law enforcement, by our fire officials, and I think we can do that. I think it's a little different at a city council meeting than it is at a large event because we do have police and fire here on, on site that are able to implement the rules of this body that we might not have at a special event that we are not, that, that we are not approving because we don't have direct control over it. So I'm fine, as councilwoman Erickson said, I'm fine with allowing a virtual option. Previous meeting, I, I voted against that. Personally, I don't, I read everything, whether you believe it or not, all the emails that come. That's why my wife's mad at me right now for this week because you were all very active, took up a lot of our time and that's good, that's, that's participation. So personally, I don't give them any more weight to an email versus a, a, a coming in person, but you know, I guess it's not about me. Some of the emails questioning the existence of these emails we receive and some of the citizen comments about your desire to be heard and that you think it's more important to be heard in person, I'm moved by that. So I'm fine with the virtual option, giving people a virtual option, but totally against moving to a totally virtual meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Moogrour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I have more questions than really a statement, but I got to start off with, I agree with many of the things councilmember Ford mentioned. I guess one of my questions though, and I've just got a couple of them, so maybe let's not answer any of them until I'm done maybe, but I'm trying to figure out what changed. What changed from mid-March to mid-April to late last week for the council members? Because we affirmed, we made a decision in March, it was a previous council, but we made a decision in March. It was well thought out, it was deliberated, and we made the decision to proceed how we did. A new council was seated in April and we reaffirmed that, that choice unanimously, I believe. And I'm trying to figure out what changed because other than a very large crowd being present last week, that was by and large voicing opposition to something that, that a few council members did want. I'm trying to figure out what changed because we had a large crowd about five weeks ago in this room and everything was fine. There was no comments afterwards in terms of we shouldn't have large crowds in this room or in this building. And now we have a, a boisterous and loud meeting last week, Tuesday. That happens, this is government, it's not, it's not clean, it's not easy, it's messy at times, it's, this is a contact sport, sometimes you've got to, you've got to be here and you've got to be heard to, to really feel the passion. So I'm trying to figure out what changed. So I would like that answered by someone. But I don't believe we need to go fully virtual. It's not a, it's not a great process. I think if anything, you'd be changing what you, what some believe to be a, a, some believe at the moment it may be difficult to express their opinions if they, if they are uncomfortable coming to this room. But you'd be changing it out for another method that would be equally not accessible for a segment of this population that cannot access the virtual platforms and wouldn't have the ability to walk into a room and express themselves. I think one of the things you mentioned was telephone access. I believe, don't, don't council members and don't the public already have access if they would like to do a phone-in, do they not have that ability already at all? I thought we had, I thought in some of the previous rules, I thought there were some telephone access possibilities, but just asking, I absolutely could be wrong on that.
There was a comment that if a meeting went entirely virtual, a method had to be provided.
Okay.
I think that's what.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you for the clarification on that, that was one of the questions I had. So. Those that come here, it's, you have to be in the room. Some of the, the messages we received last week, some of the personal messages we received back in June when we have the racism and the discussion, as well as the diversity, equity, inclusion committee discussions, you cannot feel the passion, you cannot feel what they're expressing virtually. You cannot feel that via email and sometimes you can't even feel it via phone. You have to see it, you've got to feel it, it is a different, it is a different meeting when you're here in person and giving, giving us that testimony of those statements and, and I believe it's important that they have that access to do so. So I won't support going fully virtual, I won't, I actually won't support even adding the virtual option as I didn't last meeting either, so.
And I'm sorry, I didn't understand, did you, what was your reason for not wanting to support the virtual option to allow public to attend?
I think as you're seeing more and more communities are actually going away from that, the school board this Wednesday night, as well as next Wednesday night, is going to live in person. The county board was supposed to do so this week, but they've chosen to go virtual again, but as my understanding, they're going back to in-person meetings very shortly as well. I think that there's, we, we make a lot of accommodations already. This is not about not making an accommodation, there is many ways to interact with us and many ways to access the programming that, that comes from this on the multiple streams that, that Oshkosh Media provides, and I can't support, I won't support that.
Councilmember Allison Aspe?
Thank you, Mayor. I also will not support all virtual meeting. I don't have to go to great lengths to explain what others have explained, both through public, through email, as well as my, my council members. I think, you know, my comment to this is, you know, the majority of the council, not all council, seems to be in kind of this win-lose mentality, that it's one way or it's another way. And I think we as a council, as well as with our community, you know, we, we should be demonstrating and showing a way in which we're working together and compromising. So clearly, I think we absolutely, if offering the phone is an option for people to, to plug in, absolutely we should do that. And Mr. Paschal has not been to this building since March, but I've never heard not one person amongst us on council have an issue with that at all. And same if somebody is comfortable coming in here, I would assume that, that should be fair as well. So what I think this is about is that, you know, maybe there is perhaps, and I don't know, Mayor, but you know, maybe perhaps you have a desire for your own personal reasons that really, quite frankly, that's, that's none of my business. But if you're more comfortable and you would like to work virtually, I think you should have every opportunity to do so. We do have a deputy mayor in which was, was, was elected by his peers and was certainly your, your choice for a deputy mayor. He certainly, I've not gotten any indication from him unless something has changed that he would like to continue to participate here. So I mean, certainly you have somebody that can run the meeting if you feel more comfortable, you know, working, working from home, and I respect that and I, I 100% support that. To say everything and everybody has to go all virtual, I'm not at all in favor of that because again, I don't think it has to be all one way and then completely not another way. I think we can certainly accommodate those that want to participate remotely for their reasons. And I think for those that want to be in person for their, their reasons, I think is not, I don't think that's not, I don't think that's inappropriate. So those are just my thoughts.
So you, did I understand then you would be in favor of allowing the public to virtually or by phone attend?
Well, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to that part, but when it comes to the comment, all virtual for public and officials. To, to, to make it mandatory, it's all virtual, I am not in favor of that.
Sure.
But I, I do encourage participation if they so choose, but for those that want to attend both the council and the public, I would like to see that still be an option.
So when we say at the beginning of our agenda, this was drafted and agreed to by council that while in-person comment is permitted for the individual agenda items, citizens may and are encouraged to consider written comments. And we provided a mechanism to do that. It was to accommodate and, and I believe minimize the volume of bodies recognizing the limitations of our space, and this does go all the way back to March. So I, I think it's clear that we do not have majority support to go all virtual. So that brings us to, I believe. It sounds like we have enough support, but councilmember Paschal, did you want to weigh in on the allowance of virtual by the public and/or telephone options? Number two?
Sure. I, I support those, those two steps. I, I, my concern about public, I, I do have a concern about public comment at meetings and, and take this with a grain of salt as you, as you probably will because I, I have not been to a council meeting, though I have been in the building since March, but I have not been to, you know, at physical chambers since March. I believe that there is benefit to face-to-face public comment in the sense that if there are rules and guidelines that our council pass, passes and suggests and that they are followed. So I mean, rule of order in that, in decorum goes a long ways in, in our council chambers. So, so that's, that's kind of my, one of my concerns around, around that. We can accommodate as many speakers as we want, but we also still have to follow, you know. know, room code and decorum in order to allow for that, so. But yes, in general, I would support allowing for telephone in and virtual participation at public meetings.
Would that include all the boards and commissions, and for how long during the emergency?
Sure.
Or specific meetings?
I, well, I, I believe that should apply to boards and commissions as well. And I'm actually believe that, I guess I believe in a hybrid, you know, you face-to-face comment, allow for virtual comment, what's good for one may not be as easy for the other. Many of us and even the, the public have made those comments tonight, so. I guess, as it relates to B, I would, I would apply that to all meetings going forward, you know, because I believe that there are people that can't make it to council meetings, where there are people that can make it to council meetings. So, I hope that provides you my guidance.
Councilmember Allison Asby.
Thank you. I need to go back and clarify, I guess, something which I said before. When it comes to the virtual, I guess, public, I misspoke. So, in thinking back to last Tuesday, Mr. Newman, who's in charge of our, our tech department, our IT department, had issued some concerns about the, the public meetings and the security of that. And when I spoke this morning, as soon as it came out, I realized that I had dismissed what he had said. So I think, you know, again, I'd kinda like to revisit that if possible. And, and also too, with that, I would say, I am not qualified to make that decision, as great as it sounds to have all virtual participation or an option of, of virtual participation from the public. There's also, we don't know what we don't know, but certainly Mr. Newman, who's been with us for, how many years, Tony?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. I would, I would, as Ms. Lawrenson, who's been with us for...
Got to be twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight years. I'm gonna certainly defer to them in regards to a lot of this, but specifically that, because that is not in my wheelhouse. So, I, I would prefer to hear, hear from staff's recommendation, I guess, before I really truly weigh in on the public participating virtually. So my apologies for the early hour, and perhaps four cups of coffee was not enough, but reflecting back to, to last week's meeting, I do think that's an important point.
So, Mr. Newman, I believe you had some recent information that you wanted to update the capacity, because at, at the last meeting you also referenced, there may be a limitation of 100, but that has changed, as I understand it?
And Mayor, can we also ask about cost as well?
The, the two actually go hand in hand. We currently do have a 100 participation limit on our current subscription. WebEx has a new tier that's a 200 participant limitation for an additional cost. That'd be about a $1,600 increase annually for us, because this is an annual cost for the WebEx subscription that we currently have. If we wanted to go above and beyond that, we would have to contact WebEx or Cisco to get an actual enterprise agreement and actually determine how many seats we would want for them to actually custom fashion a plan for the city of Oshkosh. But right now, their, their top canned tier is 200 participants.
And did you also say that the, the number participating on the call, that, that there was also the, the virtual waiting room or the expansion? It's not like it would be limited in terms of the people beyond that 100 or 200, that there was additional capacity for that kind of waiting room?
In a public meeting, we would have a locked meeting, which means that there is a lobby feature, people stay in the lobby until they're admitted into the meeting. The number of people actually actively in the meeting is your participation limit. The people in the lobby, you could have thousands, though I would not want to manage thousands, you could have thousands out in the lobby.
Which could happen here.
Correct.
And the security of that, that's an individual link that's sent to someone who would be registered to speak or...
If, if we were to pursue this option, we have discussed with city manager, the potential of using a registration form online to register for virtual attendance, and they would be then emailed the link for the meeting, because by taking and publishing the meeting, it's a global accessible meeting then, and we could become overwhelmed with people intentionally wanting to sway technology, to everyone's credit, the wrong way, and it becomes unmanageable.
Right, right. And city attorney Lawrenson, perhaps you might respond to councilmember Allison Asby on the concerns, I'm sorry, you could restate your question.
Well, I think, you know, is there anything from your perspective that would be concerning if per se, like, our system would get hijacked, essentially, that's my interpretation, or to lose control?
It goes back to what I had started out with, you know, we have to make reasonable accommodations. If, you know, what we, as a staff met about, sounded to us like it would work and would be reasonable, you always have to keep in mind that situations could change, and, and a specific situation could demand that you make some adjustment to that, but...
IT selected WebEx over Zoom, because Zoom, there is the capability of it getting crashed into and things like that. WebEx has higher security features that we believe are, are, will minimize those types of things. There's no, there, you can never guarantee it, but the security of them is, is much better.
Is there any way, because I noticed, you know, that Tuesday and today, there was, you know, and with emails, a particular emphasis on addresses and where, where they're located. Is there any way then through WebEx to confirm that, that they're actually presenting their real address?
That is, that is one of the caveats that we spoke about yesterday when we met, in the fact that there is no way to validate the person right down to the screen name that they put in when they log into the WebEx meeting. We can literally only take it for face value.
But, Mr. Newman, you and I also spoke about our current request to speak online, that that request to speak, either through virtual or a phone request, we could require an address for the request to speak.
We can't...
Is that accurate?
We cannot validate the address, but we can make it a required field.
Can I ask a question on that one, before, before other comments? Why does that matter, to those that are concerned about addresses? Why does that matter?
Well, I think we've seen a number of folks who weighed in on the topic that don't live in the city. Many folks have, you know, sent us emails, as you know, in the last week, maybe only a first name, maybe only a phone number, maybe, you know, we don't even hear in the body of the address of the email as to whether or not someone is a resident or property owner in the city. It could, I think, it could help to distinguish a person's position on the matter.
Reason I ask is because, yes, residents, residents get to vote, but taxpayers have a say. And so, you know, we have a large segment of this popular, of this community that is owned, you know, property is owned by people that don't live in the city limits. So, if, if the intent is to box out those that don't live here, I got some serious concerns with, with, with keeping out those that have a, a valid reason to speak to us. So, I think we're having any requirement on there to access a meeting, to get into it is a, is a big lapse in judgment in terms of, if, if we're looking to keep people out based upon their address.
Long as I have the floor, I have a couple of questions. So, you mentioned the 200 limit, that's still a limit. So you're, we're still limiting access to a meeting, because those in the waiting room or in the lobby don't have the ability to then chime in if they want to provide a comment.
That is correct.
They can listen, but they can't talk. So we're still limiting access, that is, that's a limited access point. I have concerns with not publishing the link as well. County board has met numerous times, a few times at least, virtually, and that link has been accessible, and you can log in, you can log out, you can log back in all you want, and you're an attendant, you know, at that meeting. But it is, it is published, and it should be accessible to everyone to meet. It doesn't matter where you are, you should be able to access that meeting in any mechanism you'd like. So another limitation placed upon the virtual environment of, of meeting. I think that's it for now. Well, no, one more thing. So, as part of this, to go in a, in a method that offers a virtual environment for people to speak to us, one of the suggested changes would also be that the commenting period and how people interact with us, our council meetings will drastically change. The suggestion would be then that all public comment, no matter the agenda item, would be placed at the very beginning of the meeting, and then they would be basically silenced from that point on. The way we operate, I can't then interact with a, with a citizen, I can't act with, interact with a taxpayer or anybody who wants to speak to us when the topic comes on to the floor later in the evening. I can only interact under our rules when it's on the floor. And so when somebody comes up here to speak on a topic, and we have a, a follow-up question or we want to interact a bit more, we have that ability. In that environment, under that set of rules then, we wouldn't have that ability, because it's not on the floor to talk about. So they'd be limited to give us their statement, and I would not be able to follow up and clarify, or, or to get more information on any topic that we would talk about from then forward. So, that's a serious concern as well. It, it limits our interactions with the people who want to speak to us and, and their ability to make sure that we have all the relevant information when we're making decisions up here. So, there's some serious concerns with going virtual that, that I have and many have, so.
So it, it probably...
Quick question.
Yes, Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I had asked the city attorney this prior to the meeting, but it's worth asking again. With the, the allowing of a virtual option for testifying, that would not preclude individuals from coming in-person and testifying on a specific item, correct?
It's obviously up to you guys, but that is not what, if, if you looked at the draft that was...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm referring to the draft that was sent around.
Yeah, it anticipates a hybrid where you would be able to appear in-person or appear virtually.
Okay, and it's, I guess, this is a question for city manager Roloff, is, I guess that was news to me, what a council member, Mugerhour, just said. Would that mean that all, all comments would occur at the beginning of the meeting for everybody?
That was one of the things we talked about, and that was pretty much what the county has done with the hybrid approach. Our recommendation would be, take in-person comment first, and then those folks would, you know, have their information, they've shared it with council, then go to the virtual comments, get all those out of the way, and then conduct your meeting. Similar to what was done today where all the public spoke, there was no virtual, but after everybody spoke, then you would just go online. Mr. Newman would assist you, or whoever our technological person would be, would help you get through all of your speakers, and then at the conclusion of that, then you'd just get back to conducting your agenda at that point.
Okay.
That way then you have it all there at one point, and then you have it out of the way, rather than, it'd be very difficult, one of the things we looked at, it would be very difficult to be able to sort who wants to speak to which item.
Okay.
That's one of the problems that I personally have with the county's agenda, because you're covering every item on the agenda, be it a controversial one, such as a mask ordinance, or a zoning request that, you know, somebody comes in. That's the downside of this approach, but...
But we could do it the other way. It is possible.
It would be extremely difficult, if not impossible. I don't recommend it, we went through all the different scenarios, you would probably be waiting for us to sort, you'd be, there'd be dead time while we're trying to figure it out for you. To me, that's not acceptable, and I think you'd be more frustrated with that, rather than just putting everybody up front.
Well, I just don't want it characterized that we're trying to get anything out of the way. That's, that's not the intent. The intent is to, you know, speaking to other folks' comments earlier about the elderly and not having access, so the, the intent would be to add to the capacity of public comment. And I would say that most seniors, as was referenced earlier, have access to a telephone, and therefore would be accommodated. Others who have health concerns about being in public, whether they're, you know, wearing a mask or not, would have the option of weighing in. And yes, there may be some, some losses in terms of efficiency and the ability to interact. It's not often that, when folks come up to speak, that we're having a back-and-forth dialogue. I do appreciate what councilmember Mugerhour was saying, is that it does become a little more challenging if there's a need for clarification. But as I understand it, there is not a limit to the 100 or 200, depending on your license. They are still able to hear what's going on in the meeting and access upon that lobby being freed up. But I think, I think we're at a point where we should, unless there's more comments?
Madam Mayor...
Yes.
If I could, I would, my suggestion would be, the council had already given us direction last week. I have to apologize, I, I did not ask the city attorney to specifically draft an ordinance until she started working on it yesterday. She said, "You want an ordinance, don't you?" And it kinda came to me that we normally, through the emergency, have changed council rules by ordinance. Normally, when we change council rules, we haven't done it by ordinance. That's what was in my mind. So, given the emergency, we've been doing it through ordinances. Nothing in council's discussion on the, a virtual option for people conflicts with the current order from council, it's just adding a little more information. So we can accommodate the council at the next regular meeting for virtual participation. We would come back just...
You mean, you mean accommodate the public?
Accommodate the public, thank you.
And, and the council, because we have that...
Yeah, the council's already given us that direction, that they wanted their ability to participate virtually. This is just adding the public. That is not inconsistent with the current ordinance. So, what we'll do is we'll bring back an ordinance for ratification, but we would suggest that we just begin the process to allow that virtual participation. The council did vote on that last week. It, there's a somewhat of a redundancy having it on the agenda, but it was based on Mayor's and my conversation that we wanted to, you know, kinda go through the progression. If virtual for everything was okay, well then this actually would have been kind of a moot point. Now this is relevant, but the council's already given us that direction. So, unless there's a change in direction, we'll certainly continue that method, and then just have you ratify an ordinance next week. But it's clearly a housekeeping issue, Lynn, when you, when you agree that it'd be just a housekeeping item?
Yeah, at this point.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Well, that changes that.
One more thing, I neglected to bring this up at the end. I have a feeling you're gonna be asking me the same question. Go ahead.
You're referencing our discussion on number four, and the...
Location.
And the location is, you know, if we are not gonna have this on the 12th, or the agenda on the 12th, do we really need to change the location, or would we be able to just keep it here?
It wouldn't seem, I mean, it wouldn't seem so.
I, yeah, I, I just wanted to, to clarify that.
But I guess that, it, it needs to be very, you know, clear that, I think councilmember Mugerhour mentioned, you know, back on June 9th, we, we had, the first time we had any number of public come in for, for comments on agenda items. I think there were nine people who spoke that night, nine or 12. And, you know, referencing, you know, last week's meeting, you know, people just need to understand that during the socially-distanced meeting room... you know, people just need to understand that during the socially-distanced meeting room configurations, what the clear expectation is until they're able to enter to speak if they are registered to speak on an item here. So, you know, perhaps we're getting a little better. This is, you know, there's no manual on this. We're kind of building the plane while we're flying it, right?
One of the things, if council would indulge me, we'll have to make a call. If we think we're going to have a big crowd, we just need to be able to work on the fly. Now, sometimes that might be trying to find a location with only a couple of days' notice. But if you'll indulge me to make that call. It is your meeting, but you want your meetings to be as safe and we were going to work very hard for next week's meeting. Given the nature of the discussion here, I think we can move it back here very easily. And if you just want to understand that, you know, I'll make those calls and let you know. It'll be here or there depending on, we have to notice the public appropriately. We can't be switching it with less than 24 hours' notice, for example. But as long as we're up to 24 hours' notice, we can work within those parameters.
Councilmember Ozzy.
Thank you. Thank you. So, you know, would it behoove us to maybe be proactive so that we could educate and be transparent to the community? So based on, you know, Chief Stanley and staff figuring out, okay, based on social distancing and those types of things, how many people legitimately can we accommodate, you know, on this floor? So then, and take this, please listen fully what I'm saying, but where there may be a max of an original number of people that can speak. So people know that. So it sounds like first come, first served, but what I mean is that, yes, there's so many that we can accommodate. Yes, we can accommodate more, but that there may have to be a flow in which then X amount leave and those, you know, if there's more would like to come in. And if there is registration that hits a, sorry, certain number, that then that queues staff, that we need to look for an alternate location. So kind of the parameters are, will be pre-designed and then that way that notifies the public so that they know ahead of time as well as staff so that we aren't reactionary. We're being more proactive in the event that we would have a situation that a number of people would like to participate. Just a suggestion.
And since Chief Stanley is here, maybe he could speak to what the current numbers are and what that capacity is with distancing. Sorry to call you up last minute here.
Quite all right. So in deference to the fire code, you know, we can put 25 people in the break room for overflow. And then for room 404 and 406, total, we can have 69 people. You know, that's just, except the fire code, you know, under normal circumstances. You know, obviously with the social distancing components and, you know, concerns around that, you know, that changes things quite a bit. You know, if we wanted to go back to the way it was where we had all the chairs in here, you know, you could put 69 people in here with, you know, moderate overflow, a few people in the hallway and then the rest down in the conference room. You know, that would require some different direction than the guidelines we're operating under now. That, you know, the concerns that the city manager and I speak about, you know, and the police chief, is, you know, the code is designed to absorb those people on the floor and throughout the building. You know, so when we take the 69 people that would normally be in this room and we concentrate them in the hallway, you know, that blocks the egress. You know, I can't get to stairwells and people can't move back and forth to get to restrooms, things like that. You know, so that number, that 94 number probably will be significantly lower, you know, if we're not going to increase the threshold of people that can be in this room. But that's something certainly that the fire department, you know, myself, the fire marshal, the city manager and other staff can work on of, to what you're talking about, Councilmember Ozzy, what is our true threshold of, what's that trigger point?
In COVID times.
Yep, correct.
Yeah, it's not a fire code.
And is there, is there an opportunity, you know, like we see in other businesses, to mark, you know, the six-foot, you know, it's a nice visual, right, a reminder? Is there an opportunity to do that?
We did that for the meeting in June when the folks came and spoke about the DEI committee and whatnot. And when you get them in that atmosphere, in a charged environment, the compliance was not even good then. They were very polite about it, but it was still, it was still kind of a mess. I mean, we can come up with a number. The mayor had asked about that last week and I misspoke at the time, but we don't have a number because there's no standard for COVID-related. Fire code, you know, we could fit a whole lot of people in here and nobody was on the council at the time. The last big, big event we had here was probably Stand with the Grand with it. And there were well over 100 people here and there were people outside and they eventually came in. But it was a mess in here. I mean, and I say that, we had little kids in the front row with little signs up and it was just, it was about as hectic as you could imagine, but we weren't in COVID times.
But, so, I mean, but we could figure something out, like you said, Chief Stanley, you and the, your staff as well as city manager Roloff. And then that way, that's something that we'd have consistently posted on the city website and anything pertaining to meetings. So then everybody has clear expectations of what to expect. And again, you know, if there's only, we could hold so much capacity that we do have a disclaimer. It's not that that's cut off at that time, but that there may, they may have to be outside or something until we can kind of rotate through to make sure that we address everybody. But then that way, again, like I said, you know, we're not being reactionary. We're being proactive about it. And again, it just helps with education and messaging.
And would that also include signs on the door about capacity limitations during this period?
We can, but again, that's where I think we're going to need to make some judgments. If we think we're going to have a bigger number...
Right, right.
We just got to...
I mean, it's one thing if you've got, you know, maybe a couple of people for a little bit who are waiting to get into the lobby or whatever. It's another thing if you've got, you know, a well in advance. And that's why it's important for people to register to speak, right? So that we can plan for that. It's kind of like an RSVP if we're going to host a dinner party. Not that we get to do that these days, right? But, so we know how to plan and accommodate for space and hosting.
Yeah, and just as a frame of reference, I haven't gone down to get the final count from the folks working the front door, but right before the meeting started, we were approximately 25. You know, so easily absorbed into this room, you know, no overflow into the hallway, no overflow into the break room. You know, this is a little bit different circumstance than our normal council meetings because normally business operations have shut down in the evening. So, you know, while we've had office staff, you know, city staff here, you know, there was no impeding their access to move up and down the hallways, things like that. So 25-ish was very easily accommodated.
And when you say 25, so we had 11 people who were registered to speak or that spoke in addition to council and the staff members. That's, yeah.
Yeah, that's 25 non-staff or electeds that they counted coming through the door wanting to come to the meeting.
Oh, where were the others then? We only had 11 that spoke.
Right. That, our experience has been in the June meeting and the meeting last Tuesday and this meeting is, some people just want to come and...
Okay.
Be supportive to the people that are speaking, you know, want to be present, but not everybody likes to speak. So the number of registered speakers versus attendees has not been in direct relationship with each other.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I guess as far as the length of time, Mr. Roloff, what would staff recommend for allowance of that through the emergency? Is that...
Technologically, if we're doing it for one, you know, we can do it for all. We do have to provide, I mean, we're, we have multiple abilities to listen in. With WebEx, somebody can either call in a number and they can ask to speak as well. That capability is there. So we can do it for boards and commissions as well as the council. That's, so at that point, it's up to you, Lynn.
For length of time, the, back in March, we set it to expire when the emergency is done. You could always come back. We've come back several times and amended it. So you can always come back and revisit it. At this point, I've left it at that, you know, length of emergency duration.
So understanding the board and commissions, I mean, it probably would be helpful to get some consensus from council. Do you want to add the boards and commissions? I would ask your indulgence if you do give us that direction. We've got a lot of boards and commissions. Give us time to get that implemented. We'll do it as soon as possible, but...
So even if a board or commission is not currently video broadcast or taped, the question is whether or not we want to allow public participation at board and commission meetings. It could be the case that there might need to be a, like a telephone bridge for somebody to call in. Is that...
There needs to be the techno, you can call in and be on the virtual meeting. You're just not visually present, but you're voice-present. And that's simply dial in the phone number and you're in. And we can provide that link to people. You know, we can do it publicly or privately. That's, privately is not the right term, but you know what I mean. The real challenge will be, they may have to move some of their meetings because if the WebEx capability is not available in a specific room. Normally, the meeting rooms here at City Hall do have that ability. I believe the library does, but I got to make sure, for example, that the public museum. I don't know if they have Wi-Fi capability in the room where they currently conduct their meetings. That's just one example. You know, a few years ago, we moved a Committee on Aging up here, so they're okay. But we want to make sure that we make whatever adjustments. We might have to move some of the meetings into 404, 406.
Is that even if it's just telephone access or is that only if it's WebEx? Because right now, we don't have...
The telephone access is through WebEx.
Oh, okay. My apologies. I didn't realize that.
Yeah. No, thanks, Lynn. Yeah, that's, so you could, you're WebEx, but all you got to do is dial.
Sure.
And you're good.
Okay.
So those are, the challenges we'll need to work through. We got it pretty much covered. I mean, we're already successfully doing Councilmember Peschel. We just widen that. But we got to keep an eye on those types of things. For example, if the mayor wants to order somebody out of order, we have to make sure that we cut that person off and not Councilmember Peschel.
Wouldn't you call back, Bob?
Well, Bob usually ends up calling me and then I put his phone by the mic. Anyway, we got to make sure that we work through those things. So if you could indulge us with the other boards and commissions, if that's what you want to do. Council, I think we're pretty much ready. Mr. Newman is being able to take care of that.
And I guess, you know, really what I'd speak to here as far as, you know, the rationale here is, again, you know, it is very frustrating right now, the social limits, the gathering limits. Everybody is frustrated. And for those that are even further isolated, you know, such as our elderly or those who aren't well enough or just don't, they want to engage, to have that ability to, you know, call in and to be involved, just adds to the richness of some kind of social connectedness, even if it's through telephone. The mental health experts are telling us how important that is. And for us to add that layer speaks to our willingness, not to be sneaky, but to be transparent and to embrace additional voices weighing in on our boards and commissions and council.
And I 100% agree with that, Mayor. But I think to exactly what you were speaking about, I think also conveys how those that don't feel that same way, that same argument applies. So that's where I think, you know, again...
That don't, I'm sorry, that don't feel what way?
The compassion as far as mental health and those types of things because we certainly have heard from Tuesday as well as emails and people today that that argument is equally compelling for those that want to be in person and may have significant concerns regarding masks. So you're 100% right. And it really does show that neither that has spoken or weighed in is wrong. So thank you for those comments. And I most certainly think that that's why, you know, this council versus a win-lose should be more of a win-win and how can we compromise and address the very same issues on both sides because I agree with you.
So Mayor, I would ask, is it the council's wishes that we work on the boards and commissions as well?
Yes.
They should be treated equally.
Very good. That's, I thank you for that direction.
And it would appear then that since we took number four up to the beginning, that that would, unless I'm missing something, that would remove the discussion for number three as it relates to requiring masks at all council meetings because it's already required by the state order on indoor settings.
I would agree with that.
Yep.
Why was it on the agenda then?
There, it was on the agenda in anticipation of offering options as to if we were not going to offer the virtual participation so that folks could feel relatively protected in coming in person. So it no longer applies because we added the virtual option. So did you want to go ahead and have that discussion, Councilmember Mugerhour?
No, just after, as City Manager Roloff alluded to, discussion point number two was decided at the last council meeting. So I'm trying to, I'm still trying to figure what you mean.
Not for public. It was not, not for public. It wasn't decided.
So really technically, we're not voting on anything today. It simply is discussion and then we're referring this to August 12th meeting, correct?
We'll have an ordinance to ratify the discussion that we have.
My understanding is I will bring the draft with any tweaks I make to it. And I apologize, I put those together yesterday, so there may be a small change here or there. But it should be pretty close to what you have in your pocket for the item number two, that would allow public to participate virtually at the meeting. The other two, I am not bringing or putting on the agenda.
But we're not making any decisions today. We will be doing that August 12th, correct?
But we will provide the option for the August 12th meeting for the public to participate virtually and we'll work through those details based on this direction.
And I greatly appreciate that. And the reason being, so the public understands, Ms. Lawrenson's office, because there was a couple of things that I had working on, did, based on the timeliness of this, the meeting wasn't scheduled till Friday with the options at the time. Ms. Lawrenson's office, I would not doubt probably dropped everything that they had to put all of this together. I believe Ms. Ubrich sent it out to us for 4:30-ish. I was not personally, based on my day, or what time were you able to send the drafts of...
Actually Angela got that to Diane and she emailed it out to you.
But it was later, late in the day. I had a very long day yesterday. I personally was not able to read everything and had to actually call poor Ms. Lawrenson that night to be able to pull up a few things on my iPhone. So I don't know about everybody else, but I think to be able to have a week to digest all of this, I think would be incredibly helpful before an actual vote.
Thank you.
Thank you and thank you to staff's effort.
All right. We'll take a motion. All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourn.